Please rise and join me, salute to the flag, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the meeting to order. Have approval of the minutes, motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on October 10th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Trustee Corus, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on October 10th, 2023. Motion?
I'm of it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Corus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on October 20th, 2023. Motion? Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by Trustee Corus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on November 9th, 2023. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. That now brings us to our treasurer's report. I don't know if anybody like to introduce our treasurer, Charles Bruschi. Did I spell that, say that right?
Yes, you did.
And he's here to give the treasurer's report. So go ahead.
Pleasure to be here. Got a few prepared remarks based on our activities this month and today. In September, we collected revenues of approximately $700,000. Of that, $185,000 were property taxes, $216,000 for the Justice Court, $74,000 for sewer usage, and the rest, the balance is over the remaining departments. For the first four months of this year, our revenues totaled $10.3 million. The biggest portion of that were real property taxes, which are $8.7 million. We've collected, as you know, students who already collected $5.7 million of that, which is consistent with last year's experience and also with our expectations. Interest income so far this fiscal year is $120,000 higher than last year. As you know, interest rates have been much higher, and we're benefiting from that as we have a nice cash position. Our parking fees of $108,000 and the charge point revenue system of $6,300 are both ahead of last year's experience. On the expense side, this month, in September, we had significant expenditures for retirement plan funding and for our docks, which is coming to conclusion soon. Also, the ambulance department purchased some gear for their personnel. These expenditures are in addition to our normal expenses and were anticipated in our budget. Overall, we're four months into the fiscal year and we're tracking the budget. Follow my comments.
Only question, do you have any concerns about us continuing to stay relatively on budget for the remainder, based on what you're seeing so far?
Well, qualified with based on what I've seen so far, because I've only been here for three months, and I've really, you know, spent my time looking at what we've done. And I don't know what I don't know about the future, but based on what I've seen, you know, I think things have been, the budget accurately reflects the activities of the organization.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles. Okay, the motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. That brings us to our department committee reports. And I will start with the Police Department, Fire Department, and the Ambulance Corps. So in the month of October 2023, the Sag Harbor Village Police Department had 705 calls for service. Six of those were aggravated unlicensed operation. We had one suspended registration. We had one case of sexual abuse. And we had 10 motor vehicle accidents. We had nine arrests, one DWI arrest, and 92 uniform traffic tickets were issued. As far as the Fire Department goes, in the month of October 2023, the Fire Department volunteered for 1,417 man-hours during the month. The officers and members of the department responded to 54 calls for service. These calls included three motor vehicle accidents, which had injuries, four incidents that somehow someone saw or smelled smoke, and numerous false alarms for either accidental activation or system malfunctions. You can understand the calls for the smell of smoke with the fireplaces being started up with the colder weather coming in. This month, October, is Fire Safety Month. The Sag Harbor Fire Department participated in this by going to the morning program at the elementary school and demonstrating proper ways to exit their residence in case of a fire, and invited everyone to come down to our open house, which was on October 14th. Even though the weather didn't cooperate, a lot of the stuff was held, we did it indoors. The open house was well attended. Members of the department also gave back to the community this Halloween, handing out hot dogs on Main Street, and we gave out over 900 hot dogs this year. Please, it's Fire Safety Month, so please make sure that you change the batteries in your smoke detectors and the CO alarms. That concludes the Fire Department report. As far as the ambulance goes, in the month of October, we had 64 emergency calls. That was exactly the same as October 2022. We had five work nights, two meetings, we had 12 training sessions, one work detail, and three standbys for a total of 1,067 hours. We sponsored a blood drive in October, collecting 103 pints of blood. So that was very successful for six hours worth of work, 103 pints of blood. So that concludes my reports for the emergency services for October 2023. And that brings us to Deputy Mayor Hay with Parks, Justice Court, Planning, and the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mayor. The Justice Court activity has been, has, as with most activities associated with police-fire, picked up again. The amount of cases opened this year and cases closed this month, last month, and this month has decreased from the summer levels, but still on levels higher than we've had in the past year for the same time. So what's also happening is the revenues are picking up in the court again this year relative to last year. Once again, I'd want to say the Police Department has done a phenomenal job, shorthanded this year with all the activities that went on this summer into the fall, picking up the slack, going above and beyond to make sure they're enforcing, frankly, the parking regulations, which is the biggest revenue generator. So the revenues this year will be relatively higher than last year. Not as high as during the COVID years, but we don't have as many people here anymore year-round, so that makes some sense. Well, we're above the 2015 levels, but, you know, we were tracking revenues total coming in through the Justice Court at $600,000 a year for a four- or five-year period. Before then, it was in the 550s to 500s. Now it's, this year, it's going to top 500 again for the first time in a while. So that's, that's a sign that despite all the shortcomings, the shorthandedness they had in the police force this year, they were able to get a lot of work done and still enforce the regulations on the streets of the village, which is phenomenal. So I just want to keep giving them kudos for the work that they've done in a difficult time this year, shorthanded with a lot of activities going on. I'm going to save the Parks report. We have a charter coming up later, and that's kind of a broad charter covering all the parks and open spaces in the village, and I can give a little update with that as well at that time, if that's okay.
That's fine.
And that's all my reports.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hay. That brings us to Trustee Corus with the Sewer Department, Village Grants, and the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, Mayor. I will start off with the report from the sewage treatment plants. Total gallons received this month, 2.132 million. 44,000 gallons of sludge were removed. DMR reports were forwarded 10/27. Suffolk County DHS inspection date, the next inspection will be 8th of January. New York State DC inspection date is always is open. We had no complaints for the month. And summary of operations, wastewater treatment plant running well, and it was under all permitted levels, and we're operating three of the five basins available. Suffolk County Department of Health Service inspection was conducted on 10/16. We got a satisfactory report. That's as good as you get. There's nothing better than satisfactory. So we're very pleased to see that. So interesting, we had a monthly grease trap inspections. We had 27 traps inspected, and this time there were five failures, which is way down what we've been having traditionally since we introduced the new code. And all five were pumped out completely as per new resolution. So hopefully the word's getting out there, and we'll see, we'll see better compliance. Benson Contracting was out to work on one of the pumping parameters and installed a replacement influence valve on basement number five. The decrease from September to October was 217,000 gallons. I have very little report on grants this month. We're in sort of a holding pattern. We're waiting to hear from New York State, which we have two grants, as I mentioned last month, pending there for sewers. One is 5.9 million, the other is 1.5 million. And we're hoping to hear in December. It's when these grants are normally awarded. Last year, maybe it was a change of governor, they were late, and these grants were not notified until, I think it was February or March. These are the same grants we applied for last year. We were not successful last year. So we had a meeting with New York State. We changed, we corrected or maybe made some additions to our application, and so we're waiting to hear back. I did hear on Monday from our congressman, Nick Alota, that there is a water bill under consideration. It was presented as a done deal, but I don't believe it is. Washington, you can, it's not done. I think it's over till it's over. But it includes 1.25 million for Sag Harbor Sewer District expansion. So I mean, let's believe this is very, very hopeful. The money's been allocated. I think it has to go, it has to go through the Senate, and so I'll keep you posted on that. I do my best to find out as much as I can. That would make a huge difference to our efforts. And when it comes to sewer expansion, we've sort of slightly shifted gears. We've accumulated this substantial amount of money over the last four or five years. We had our first meeting on the next phase, which would be preparing documents to go out to bid, so we can get some real hard numbers, and hopefully by this time next year, we might actually be executing on that. As far as ZPA, I had outreach regarding the sound in the room, which we're working on. They have a lot of papers to shuffle and big drawings, and the noise of these microphones apparently picks up a lot of that noise and makes it difficult for people who are participating online to follow along. When we set up this room, as you see it now, which is a vast improvement than what we had before, we were in the middle of COVID, and we had a lot of issues with supply chain. So the system here, especially this microphone, was not what we really wanted in the beginning. We wanted a different style, different type, and we also wanted a big bar microphone up here. We're investigating that right now, so that if we could move the microphones off the desk to above us, it would help to alleviate some, if not all, of the paper shuffling issues. So I'll keep you posted on that as we move along, and that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Corus. That brings us to Trustee Plum with the Public Works, the Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review.
Thank you. The Highway Department has been picking up leaf around town. You may have heard them. Hard to miss. The Round Pond restoration has begun. It will be completed in one month. If anybody's been by there.
It's amazing.
It's amazing, yeah.
Yeah.
Big improvement, yeah. Irrigation lines, RPZs have been blown out for the winter. Those are winterizing public water. The patch, patching the roads continues where needed. Tree trimming continues around the village. Street sweeping continues. Cutting of old park areas have been done for the last time, so no more grass. All crosswalks have been repaid for the school and around the village, and garbage throughout the village is being picked up once daily now that the season is over. You've also may have noticed the new streetlights and lamps that are going in. It's, it's almost finished. There are a few that aren't, and we were told that the fixtures themselves are, the bulbs are dimmable. And there's a question as to whether you can dim each one individually or groups of them or that kind of thing, but we're getting the software and the training to attempt to figure that out. A 10-year-old could probably do it more quickly, but we, so we're working on that, and that's where we are with that. And as far as the, everything's kind of going normally with the ARB. No issues that I know of. I met with Steve Williams last week, and we're soon to be doing okay.
Any, anything on the clock? What do you think about the clock, Bob?
The clock and I have, Dean and I have a little different view on the clock. He, he wants a new clock.
Right.
And I want to redo the old clock.
Can we bring it to your basement and have you, have you work on it in your basement? Is that a?
What?
Can we bring it to your basement and have you?
Well, that's what I was thinking. I'll just go get it.
All right.
Because I said I found the mechanism.
You did.
He seems to think it's, no, he wants a new, he wants a bull of a clock, which I can see, but that one wasn't a bull of a clock, so. But we have not forgotten it, and it's under discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. That brings us to Trustee Kane with the Building Department, Harbor and Docks, and the Harbor Committee.
Okay, great. Just to go over the Building Department. For the month of October, there were nine building permits, 56 inspections, 21 CFOs, and 42 notices of violation. It brings us to a pace that we're still substantially over budget, running at over $600,000 year-to-date. But that is actually, you know, behind last year's pace, since last year's pace was much more substantial. And as I think I mentioned before, with the increase in interest rates, we've definitely seen things slow down a bit in the Building Department.
Excuse me, Trustee, when you say over budget, you mean over budget and revenue collections?
Yes, yes. Not, yes, not expenses. Thank you for that clarification. And then to go to Harbor. When we look at the season, and for those of you that don't have a boat, October 31st is when we like to have all the boats out of the water. It's not always perfect, but it was actually very well done. And we really want to thank the whole dock staff who did really a tremendous job this year, realizing that we added the additional slips with the new docks, and everything went very smoothly. So we want to thank everyone for a very good year. The weather cooperated. The transient docks and the outer moorings were really pretty full most of the whole year, so we appreciate that. Now, for the month of October, as many of you know, the weather on some of the weekends was not all that great for boating, so it was a little quieter, although until the last weekend, which was, which was very busy. When you look at the Marine Patrol on October 13th, there were five Marine patrols and five in the outer mooring for field inspections that were completed. And that was done in combination with two Southampton Town Marine Patrol officers, and they conducted a marine sanitary device inspection along with our team. In doing so, they did find one issue with one boat where violation was written, so just for you to be.
How many boats did they inspect, do you know?
Total of five. And then if we want to look to see for the revenue budget for the docks, we're running about 18% ahead of last year's pace, which currently has us over 1.8 million for the year to date. So, which is great to have that revenue for the village. So we want to thank everyone on the docks, and we look forward, we're, we've been having several meetings, looking and planning for next year, and we'll be working on some things, so we'll post to you as that comes along.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Kane. With that, can I get a motion to accept the department reports? Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by Trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried. That brings us to our public comments section, 15-minute public session. Input for comments and questions, limit three minutes per speaker concerning the treasurer's report and the department reports. Does anybody have, yes? Nada?
I just can't keep my mouth. I don't know if the mayor had a chance to mention to any of you, but I do think there's a possibility for affordable housing in the Washington Street Lot. If you put up pilings, you could probably do two stories above it. We do own that property. It's across from Boulevard. And looking at it, I don't think it would disturb anybody in the neighborhood, and it would be a great area to put some affordable housing. So I'm going to throw that out. And by the way, the hot dogs from the fire department itself, the way they had it out, and I knew how many.
You did.
How many, he's just a candy.
Okay. Thank you, Nada.
That was a good idea.
Anthony?
On the reports? Where I'm looking for the housing? The hot dogs. The hot dogs, sir.
Evening, Anthony, from Revoss City. Totally, total surprise bringing this up, but since Nada brought it up, I'll bring it up.
Hot dogs?
No. Can I take this street, just for the record, where that parking lot is now? If you ever look at some old photographs or old maps of Sag Harbor, there were probably five or six two-story buildings located in that lot now. Put affordable housing there, if that comes into play, you know, you'd really just be making Sag Harbor look more like it did 120 years ago.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony.
Anyone else?
Hot dogs?
Mr. Bory? Our harbor master?
This isn't going to be three minutes.
Okay.
I just want to thank the board for all the cooperation with that dock expansion. I think it came out great, as you can see, our revenues are up, and it really worked out really well. All you guys, ex-mayor, Jim Rocka, Kate for putting up with my nonsense every day. It really went well, so thanks again.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks, Bob.
Just wanted to be known, I'm parked in the Washington Street Lot.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to our introduction section. The first item up, we have the 2023 Affordable Housing Initiative Planning Study. Mr. Ellsworth, are you going to present that to us?
Good evening, John Ellsworth, State Association of Public Parkers, the village planning consultant. I'm just going to give an overview of the, the planning, the draft planning reports that was prepared and made available on the village's website, depending upon what happens. It's universally, universally acknowledged that there is, that the need for affordable housing or what is also known as affordable workforce housing is an important issue in the villages Sag Harbor, as is the case throughout the entire East End and Long Island and the wider regions. The village has already enacted legislation in the code directed at addressing the local supply of affordable housing. This includes chapter 150, which establishes an administrative provision for the creation of affordable housing. Section 300-9.12, which allows for accessory apartments in the R20 Residence District. Section 300-11.5, which allows apartment buildings in the Office District. And section 311.6, which allows accessory apartments in the village's business district. These provisions, as the board is aware, and as I'm sure we, many of the people behind me, have not been as successful as we can hope in accomplishing the desired progress in providing affordable housing. The village has continued to pursue ways of providing affordable housing, and this includes recent amendments to section 300-9.12 to further encourage accessory apartments in the R20 District. By way of historical perspective, in June 2020, planning analysis was completed to evaluate a proposal to allow multifamily residences as a special exception use in the OD and VB districts. The resulting legislation amended in the zoning code was rescinded as a result of a legal challenge. However, the importance of addressing the affordable housing issue has not abated, and if anything, it's gotten more dire with the increasing escalation of housing prices. Last month, Nelson Popper, he has prepared a preliminary draft, follow-up planning analysis, planning analysis to examine strategies for addressing the issue, particularly the concept of establishing a floating overlay district, which I'll explain shortly. The rest of my presentation tonight will cover what is in that planning study and what we're all here to talk about. The planning analysis has been posted on the website, as I mentioned previously, and is available, available for public review. Importantly, the document is stamped preliminary draft for review. No decisions have been made at this time, and in fact, a specific proposal has not been prepared. The board is looking for public input before deciding how to proceed. When the village receives a proposal, a proposed recommended code, a proposal, recommended code language will be presented as a draft local law, and there will be further opportunity for public input and a public hearing prior to the adoption of any code amended by the board. If the board chooses to adopt a new floating district, any affordable housing development would require a change of zone, which is a Board of Trustees action requiring an additional public hearing. Again, this evening is an initial step in the continuing process in this board's efforts to provide affordable housing, to encourage appropriate development projects with an affordable housing component. Multiple steps to follow. As background, the annulled 2022 legislation established mixed-use buildings. So I'm going to explain what was done previously and how it differs from what is being proposed, or what is being considered currently. The 20, the annulled 2022 legislation established mixed-use buildings containing affordable workforce housing apartments as a special exception use in the OD and VB districts, subject to Board of Trustees approval. However, New York store, New York State law limits the board's authority in reviewing such applications because special exception uses are considered to be permitted in the district. That's the definition of the term special exception in the state law, subject to reasonable standards. In other words, affordable workforce housing apartments were added to the list of permitted uses in these two districts with special exception approval, applied to all parcels in the OD and VB districts that met the standards that were established in the code. The current concept is to create a new, what is known as a floating zone, that would be added to the zoning code, but would not be applied to any specific parcels. Anyone, subsequently, anyone who wants to undertake development pursuant to the floating zone would have to be granted a change of zone by the Board of Trustees. The current concept is a completely different type of approval than the previous mechanism involving a special exception use. As noted earlier, special exception use is considered to be permitted, subject to reasonable standards, and in fact, any application for a special exception approval is required to be reviewed and processed. In contrast, the village has afforded the maximum degree of authority in its review of a change of zone application. The Board of Trustees can simply choose not to entertain the application, and if it is not in the best interest of the village. And even if such an application is processed, the board is, has the ultimate authority to seek modifications or to deny the application if it is determined to be, if it is determined not to be desirable. or to deny the application if it is determined to be, if it is determined not to be desirable. The floating zone will not give any property owner any new rights to development, and each application will be reviewed on its own merit. As a variation of the floating zone concept, such as such a zone could be applied as an overlay district, which retains the underlying zoning and establishes supplementary requirements for multi-use affordable workforce housing use. So if it was applied to the village business district, the property would still be in the village business district, and the additional requirements for the affordable workforce housing overlay would be applied. A floating district is not a new concept in the village. The zoning code previously had two such districts, moderate income residence district, which was established in nineteen eighty-four. It was rescinded in two thousand nine as part of a comprehensive code amendment without any approvals. The M I R district also allowed nursing homes and similar uses, which were deleted from the code with the rescission of the M I R. And those uses are not allowed anywhere in the village. The second one is multifamily residence district, which had standards similar to the middle-income residence district. The multifamily district was also rescinded in two thousand nine. There was one approval under that zoning at sixty-eight West Water Street. Floating districts are common to many municipalities on Long Island that are often created to provide opportunities for multifamily housing, including for affordable workforce housing, at appropriate locations to be determined on a site-specific and project-specific basis. There are a number of important considerations in taking up this concept and considering how to proceed. The board of trustees has clearly expressed a desire to expand opportunities for the provision of affordable workforce housing in the village at appropriate locations in a manner that minimizes adverse impacts. The office district and V B district generally appear to be best able to accommodate development in these districts with the focus of the twenty twenty-two legislation. However, it is recognized that suitable sites may occur at other locations, as determined again on a site and project-specific basis in order to advance the village's goal of increasing workforce housing opportunities. In considering the suitability of a given site for workforce housing or affordable housing development, a range of factors should be examined, which would be specified in any new zoning code language. These include, but not limited to, the size of the property and surrounding land uses, sewer limitations, traffic and parking, impacts on historic resources, flooding impacts, community character, depth of groundwater, presence of wetlands and surface waters, and there may be other issues that apply to any given site. The village's comprehensive planning documents clearly substantiate the need and the importance of increasing increasing the supply of workforce housing or affordable housing in the village. These elements of the village's comprehensive plan includes the village code, of course. There was a planning, what was known as the planning strategies document in two thousand eight, and that was focused on the village's business district. There was also, as an appendix to the planning strategies, a report, a draft local residential housing plan. And then subsequently, there was a view of the two thousand eight planning strategies and recommendations for a comprehensive plan update, which was prepared in two thousand twenty-two. The two thousand eight planning strategies, planning strategy study emphasized that addressing the issue of affordable housing is integral to achieving the overall goals for the commercial district and the village as a whole. Planning strategies also promoted a broad approach to addressing this issue, recommending that the village, quote, research and pursue other avenues for establishing affordable housing, end quote, beyond those that were identified in specifically in the study. So the next steps in this process, and again, were in the initial steps. If the board of trustees decides to proceed with a proposed code amendment to create a floating overlay district, detailed legislation would be drafted establishing procedures and standards for affordable workforce housing applications. As noted earlier, the draft legislation would be subject to another public hearing by this board, which would provide an opportunity for comment on the specific provisions of the proposed code amendment. The October twenty twenty-three planning analysis provides an outline of issues that would be addressed in the draft legislation. And these include the location that would be appropriate for affordable workforce housing. In general, just to summarize, in general, some locations are more appropriate for such development, such as areas that already have high-density development, for example, in the heart of the downtown. While other locations would not be suitable at all, such as in the middle of residential neighborhoods. Although these, those locations maybe are, would continue to be eligible for affordable workforce housing in the form of individual accessory apartments under existing code provisions. Additionally, additional issues, availability of public water and sewer disposal capabilities, potential for traffic and parking, and this reiterate the issues that were included in the analysis. Potential for impacts to historic resources, floodplain considerations, community character considerations. For locations that are generally may be considered as being more appropriate for this type of development, the specific aspects of a given application will be important to determining whether it fits into the surrounding neighborhood in terms of density, building and site dimensions, and related factors. The draft zoning legislation, and again, we're not there yet, that would be a future step, would also have to include the procedural requirements for an application. And this, this is important, this, the requirements would include the preparation of a conceptual plan defining the development that is being proposed if the overlay district change of zone application is granted. The draft zoning legislation would be subject to review on the speaker and would be referred to the village's other wards, as well as Suffolk County Planning Commission for review and recommendation. And that's my presentation on the concept of the overlay district for affordable housing. Certainly, if you take any questions, board can have at this point.
You mentioned that this legislation would not give homeowner, property owners any additional rights. If that's the case, then what does it do?
It doesn't, the enactment of the legislation itself doesn't give any property owners rights because the district is not applied to any properties. They would have to come before this board and get a zoning change. And if they are successful in such an application, then they would have rights under the legislation.
Could I say that it gives property owners the right to apply to the board for a change of zoning?
When a property owner might apply to the board for a change of zoning, are there specific considerations at the board? I know someone goes to Z B A, there are certain, there are certain considerations that are applied. Or is this wide open and for the board's interpretation? You say we could decide not even to hear it?
Right. So the latest, when the legislation is created, it will have standards to help the board make decisions about applications. But you, no matter what's in the code, the board can decide that they don't like the application that they want to attend.
And does one application create precedent for another?
Not in defer to council or whatnot in the changes on, because each application is unique.
They're distinguishable.
I would, I would just say that we, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing from the public's input on this before we draft of legislation, that we need to hear from them as far as these standards that are to be applied.
Right. And just to add to that, and a hundred percent agree with the man, to say, that's consistent with how New York state law lays out how these processes should operate. There should be initial public presentation of a concept. And then you go back and you draft up what you want to do in detail. And then there's a hearing on the legislation, so the public gets at least two bites of the apple expressing their opinion.
Yeah, there's a lot in here. It's a great document. I'm halfway through it on a deep dive. I would highly recommend that everybody download it and go through it slowly. There's a, there is a lot to unpack.
Right. And what I'll say is that one of the pitches with the prior affordable housing legislation was that the board took the first pass at it, and that was not popular. This seems to be that same thing again.
It, there is no other way to do it with the change of zone, but the fact that you're going from a special use permission, which is a permitted use, and you have to hear an application, you have to consider it, to a change of zone, you have the authority to, much stronger authority, you can say no right off the bat to the application. You have much more power to ask them to modify the application, and even when you get to the end of the process, you can say you don't like the application and deny it.
So what you're saying is that if it's listed as a special exemption, it has to be heard?
Right.
And there's specific standards and a special exemption, that if you, if you achieve those standards, you have certain rights.
Correct.
In this case, you would not.
Correct.
That's a huge difference.
Right. A special exception use is a permitted use, subject to standards. A zone change is completely in your authority.
Do we have examples of towns, villages on Long Island who have, having gone through the last process? I really, you know, would like to see how this has worked in other places. And what the downfalls, like, there's always a downside. And I really want to dig into that this time sooner rather than later, so that we can feel comfortable.
Great, totally. And in the next stage in preparing legislation, we will go take that deep a dive and come up with specific examples to make sure we avoid pitfalls that others have fallen into.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Somebody with a hand up?
You have questions?
I mean, I'd, I'd rather wait till we get further on in this process, Mazia, before we, I mean, if you want to make a comment, that's fine, but I, you know, this is, we're just in the initial phases, I would say. Have you read the document? All right. So I would say, you know, let's review the study, and we're gonna have, I would like to set up a special work session with the public to help us craft this and put some standards in place.
Hold on, hold on. If you're gonna make a public comment, come to the, come to the microphone. Come to, I'm sorry, if you're gonna make a comment, come to the microphone, identify yourself.
Hi, Mazia.
Spring Street, Sag Harbor. Thank you for the information provided. I've been wondering about the floating zone idea. I'm not gonna get into depth about it before reading it. What my concern is, is not giving the public or homeowners too much right. It's not giving them enough right. If I'm planning to build a three hundred square foot, one-bedroom accessory dwelling in my backyard, I shouldn't necessarily have to come to the board and ask permission.
You don't.
I don't think you do. That's a different piece of legislation. That's the A D, usual legislation, that's before the board as well. But that's much further along the path.
Floating zone is not related to the accessory structure?
Not at all. Separate code sections.
All right. Thanks, Mazia. So what I have next, anybody else? So we have an introduction of two local laws that I'll have counsel give a brief overview for. And we're going to have public hearing on it on December twelfth, correct, Liz?
Yes.
So if you want, we'll start out with the resolution to schedule a public hearing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three for a local law amending Village Code, chapter one sixty-seven, noise, one sixty-seven dash four, section A, section two, exceptions, to amend the hours of construction activities that are exempt from the noise provisions. So do you want to give a brief explanation, Liz?
Yes. Just give me one moment, I'm sorry. So this is to eliminate the noise from construction activities that could occur on Saturdays. And so that would be deleted from the code, and it's in chapter one sixty-seven. Sorry, I don't see it in my book.
So basically.
Right here.
Yeah, I think people.
It's one sixty-seven dash four, exceptions to the hours of permitted construction activity. So this would eliminate any construction activities creating noise between the hours of nine and five P M on Saturdays. And it would be deleted from the code so that people would not be able to take on construction activities that create noise on Saturdays. Would also extend the hours between eight and six to eight and seven P M on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, except public holidays. So that's the sum substance of that. Proposed law, there'll be a public hearing to consider this on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
In a nutshell, excuse me, it eliminates construction on Saturdays. So they're already not allowing the weekends, Sundays, and national holidays. We've had some problems with inspectors not being on duty, cats away, mice to play, people do things on the weekends. North Haven has done this as well, and the building department favors it.
Okay, so we'll have a public hearing, like I said, on December twelfth, so we'll take comments then at that time. A motion to introduce?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Motion by trustee Corr, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. The next is a resolution to schedule a public hearing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three for local law amending Village Code three hundred dash nine point four, section D, fences, walls, and gates to increase the height of permitted gates.
So this is a local law that will create two sections. Right now, gates are limited to four feet in height on residential zoning districts, and this will distinguish the gates between the historic district, where it'll still be required to be four feet in height, and then it will, it will allow outside of the historic district gates to be, to not exceed six feet in height, as long as a minimum of fifty percent of the gate material is open or non-opaque, and that the gate or gateposts are set back eighteen feet from the edge of the street. And that's outside of the historic district.
Thank you.
And can we clarify for the public what type of gates we're speaking about? Gates that you walk into, driveway gates?
Driveway gates, generally speaking.
Predominantly driveway, but it would include, if someone had a six-foot gate in, in the historic district where you walk through in the front of their house, that would not be permitted. But outside the historic district, as long as it's opaque material and you can see through. And that's really where we're, we're trying to continue the ability for visibility. Because as we know, we do want to encourage this as to being a walking village, both in the historic district and outside the historic district, which is why we're keeping the visibility. And there are a lot of examples, it's over twenty, I know, without even really trying to count them all, of examples of where there are driveway gates, particularly some walking gates that are in the front outside the historic district. So that's what we're trying to work through this.
This will be for a public hearing December twelfth.
December twelfth again.
Eighteen-foot setback actually serves two purposes. One, it doesn't create a blockade on the street. And two, more practical, it means you can pull your car in, wait for the gate open without blocking traffic.
Can I have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane. Can I have a second? Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. That brings us to our public hearing section. Local law amending Village Code two sixty-five dash one, speed limits to make the speed limit twenty-five miles per hour for Suffolk Street Extension. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing? Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is open. Do we have any comments? Yes, sir. Thank you, John.
Mayor of the Village, board of trustees, thank you for putting this legislation together. My name is Tom Thorpe. I live at one eighty-eight Suffolk Street. And there are a number of other Suffolk Street residents here tonight that may also have comment to, to, on this. I'm clearly in support of it, and my family is as well. We introduced the request in your September meeting to take the speed limit to twenty miles an hour. So this is a great step in that direction. And I know you've been monitoring the speeds and traffic flows up there. And I know you've been monitoring the speeds and traffic flows up there. Uh, recently it's been pretty calm, but that's no surprise. Did it in July, August, it would be very different. So this is quite important. Um, I'm curious, uh, about some of the other dimensions that we brought up, uh, in September about possibly, and that, these are in no way to shoot at this. This is good. This is what we need to get a storm. And then the question becomes, how do we continue to improve the calming of that street? Which is a cut through between Germaine and Madison in order to get to Sag Road and along south. Uh, there was talk of trying to get to 20 miles an hour. There was some discussion of speed bumps, bumps, depending on, I guess, how high they are. And I'm just curious if there was any further consideration of those two aspects to our original request to get us on a path perhaps to additional, uh, legislation that would even strengthen what you've got before us now, which we, we do support.
So that I met with our, uh, representative Fred Deal, and I discussed this, the issue of 20 miles an hour and the state currently will allow villages and local municipalities to lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. That's the lowest we can go. What happened was the city, believe it or not, passed a law to lower it to 25. And then the villages and the local municipalities out on Long Island and throughout the state piggybacked on that piece of legislation. Currently, the city is now trying to lower it to 20 miles an hour. There's some debate going on among their constituents as to whether to move that forward or not. It looks like it will move forward. Representative Deal had asked me if I wanted to wait and see what would outcome. He thinks that that's going to pass or to come up with a few streets in the village, he can then introduce a law and see if he can get it passed. So I'm in the process of creating a list of the streets and then I will ask representative Deal to go ahead with that piece of legislation. So that's where, as far as the speed bumps go, I was initially against putting speed bumps in the village because it tends to cause issues with plows and emergency vehicles. Um, I did see, I drove through Sagaponic and they've put quite a few of those slow and they seem to be, they seem to be getting the job done with not that much uh, of a negative effect, but I would really want to look closer into that before committing to doing something like that. We have to take into consideration those other, um, like I said, the emergency vehicles and the plows and how that would affect their operation.
Unless those weren't finished, they were kind of stealth at one point. They weren't even painted, which I thought was a cool idea, like.
Well, then also now the question comes up, uh, when it snows, right? So it snows, you're not gonna see those, almost like a runway telling you that that speed hump is coming up. You're not gonna see that. So could create, I don't want to create a dangerous situation in order to correct a dangerous situation. So just put that out there.
For your initiative to look into some things that are different from what we've done as potential future steps and then working with, uh, representative Field in the same vein of what, what's out there for the future of not just Suffolk Street, but the, I think the streets in the entire village, given some of the experiences we're having.
Yeah. And I, I, you know, in the past, there's been some pushback on signage and stuff, but I, I don't think we have enough signage. And I don't think it's, some of this, even on my street, on Hempstead Street, there's two 25 mile per hour signs and one is completely obstructed by a tree. You don't see it until you're literally four feet away from it. So I think we need to do a little bit of a better job on, on the signage.
And while I can't speak for the other propos, that we need more some wins, presuming this is approved, we need more than one sign at one, you know.
One 30 mile per hour sign is all I see on that street.
Several, two or three, five signs on that street to get people's attention. And by the way, the counter does a great job. Because I think people come around the corner and see the counter with the flashing lights and they say, oh, when am I gonna, am I going slow enough that I'm not gonna get, you know, an automatic ticket? So that may be an interesting calling strategy from time to time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thorpe.
Yes, Yonkers. I just wanted to give, uh, Oakland as on the list.
I can, uh, we definitely put Oakland on the list.
Is there a list? Because, uh, Harrison Street Extension is a drive through also. Is there a list that is open to review?
I haven't composed a list yet. So what I'm going to do is take every street in the village and put that on the list. The ones that are not 20 mile. That's my list. This is. They asked for a list, so I'll give them a list. Any, any other comments?
Hi, I'm Tricia Diavant. I also live on Suffolk Street Extension and I just want to say that I'm a hundred percent behind Tom's efforts and I really appreciate that he is taking the time and, and, uh, energy and effort to put this forward and I hope you'll consider it. I think it's a really good idea.
Thank you. You know, I've heard, I've had people complain to me about the stop signs or some of the newer stop signs we've put in the village. And the people that have complained to me don't live in the village. They're, they're driving through the village from areas, surrounding areas. And what I ultimately say to them, well, if you lived on that street, you know, you would appreciate that stop sign. So that could be another, we, maybe we need to look at that also where we can use stop signs to, to calm some traffic.
One, one issue with stop signs though is that there's a noise when they stop and then they continue, although it does definitely slow people down. You don't want to make it easier to drive through the village. I know that.
So we have somebody's hand up online?
Right here.
Right here. This gentleman here. But there's somebody online, Cassie, is that true?
Barton Quillen. I live at Suffolk Street as well, way before Suffolk Street. I have a four and a half year old daughter. Uh, no, no question about it. What we see, but Tom Thorpe sees all the time. Less so in the fall, in the winter, but certainly in the summer. It's a completely different ball of wax. And we walk outside a lot and it's, uh, it'd be a great change of quality if we could do something about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cassie? Okay. I'm not seeing him on the screen here. We have Silas.
Martyr on this screen.
He's on the other screen.
While we're waiting, I just want to thank Lieutenant Drake and the police force for the data they gathered on Suffolk Street as well, the work they did uh, to give us the information that we needed, um, about traffic flows, even though it wasn't peak summer traffic. Um, so we realize it's probably worse in the summer too, but it's important to have data.
It wasn't, it wasn't peak summer traffic, but there were 2,000 cars that went down that road in a week.
In a week.
Mr. Newby? I can't hear you. We, we can't hear you, Douglas. Do you have, maybe your computer is muted?
Nope.
Still can't hear you. We can't hear you, sir.
There is, there is a mute on his. Okay, now it's gone. Try again, Doug. Nope.
Nope, the mic's not connected.
It's all these updates. Yeah. You do chat.
I don't think we're gonna be able to.
We'll come back to you, Douglas, if you can figure that out, okay? Anybody else wish to comment?
Anybody else online?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jenny Noble and I live on Suffolk Street. And I think that, um, speed bumps would be especially important because a lot of young people have radar attackers for police. So they just blow through it no matter what speed it is.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Gregory. I live Suffolk Street as well. Uh, I have a six year old son and he asked me to come and ask you to put in extra vague bumps to increase the speed limit to 155, 973 miles an hour.
Sounds inconsistent.
In, in all seriousness, um, I do implore you to think about the speed bumps, extra signage, and I'm very grateful to you all for the efforts so far. I think.
Thank you.
Do we have speed bumps on Glover?
Yes.
They were paid for by the people.
And have we had any bad feedback about, I haven't personally, but I totally, but I've.
I have gotten some complaints from about the plows and also about, you know, ambulances and fire trucks going over it.
Plows is a big thing, because, you know.
Yeah, ambulances, of course. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
People driving too fast over the bumps.
And sometimes the design of the bumps can mitigate that.
Design could, could be.
And longer.
And longer. Yeah. So there's a definite up, yeah, and down. This is a change of, interesting. Any, any other comments? Go ahead.
Okay.
That's muted. I can see. Okay.
I have people work on, uh, on Catherine's computer. So Douglas, you be 244 Madison. I just wanted to add that, um, I, I think, uh, my godella, it's a great idea to add all of the, uh, roads in the village to the, uh, the, the list for, uh, representative Field, but, uh, there, there are also a lot of inconsistencies in the village, one that I'm very well aware of. If you drive along Hassan, the speed limit is 25. You turn onto, uh, Madison, uh, there's no, uh, new sign until you get to Marsden saying that the speed limit's 20. So, uh, um, you know, depending on how you get to some, uh, roads in the village, um, the, uh, the speed limit varies, which is obviously, um, uh, pretty weird. So, um, perhaps in any review, you can also, uh, sort of look at making sure that the signs are consistent as, uh, to go into the historic district and zone.
Okay. Thank you, Douglas.
Harrison's not historic.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll have a second. I'll second it by trustee Corish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. I have a motion to adopt. Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Corish. All those in favor?
Aye. With the addition of Oakland, correct? Addition of some streets.
Well, that, what I'm going to do is, and I have to correct.
Not on this, though. Not on this.
This is just specifically to get this done while we're, because that takes time.
Working for the others.
So that's done.
Right. So motion, motion to adopt, right? We made that.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the local law is adopted. That, so 25 miles per hour on Suffolk Street Extension. So that brings us to the continued public hearing. A local law to amend village code 300 dash nine point one two, accessory apartments in the R20 zoning district and 300 dash nine point one, section B, section five, placement of accessory buildings, structures and uses to reduce the size of an accessory structure and clarify code provisions. I believe this drops it to 280 square feet, counsel?
Correct. It drops it to 280 square feet from, uh, 500.
Okay.
And has some other, um, just clarifications of the code as well, um, with regard to what's required in the covenant. And I think it eliminates, um, the sole entry for, um, the principal for the apartment to face a street. So the door doesn't have to face the street. So it gives more flexibility for creating it.
Yep. But again, this is only in context of affordable housing. This is the Affordable Housing Code for accessories.
This is, uh, accessory apartments in R20, which are.
R20, market based or affordable, doesn't matter?
They're, they're affordable and they're, or they could be owned by a family. That's what the code already states.
Yeah. So you can have your children or your mother.
Mother-in-law.
Mother-in-law.
We didn't amend that section of the code. So this has been, um, for public hearing and this is the continued public hearing. And there's a notice of adoption prepared for you tonight as well.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public on this?
I'd say I think a lot of these are, are gonna require lot coverage variances right off the bat, which is, can be taken case by case, right?
Yeah, they still have to go through all of.
You do have a public comment.
Yes, Mazia.
This is the right time. I think it's a great idea to reduce the size to 280. Um, you can have a pretty nicely sized building, uh, studio building, kitchenette. My question is this, if I apply as an, to have an affordable accessory structure and I get granted the permission, I build it and five years down the line, I decide to sell the house, what happens then?
There are covenants recorded to maintain the affordability, excuse me, there are covenants recorded to maintain the affordability. And if you, if the new purchaser doesn't want that, they have to actually get rid of all, um, indicia of habitable space. I think it's just an accessory structure again.
Is there a way that I could pay to purchase that right back or give that right back? In other words, rather than tearing down the accessory structure, could the buyer, first, let's say, pay some fund and keep this, keep the structure, use it as a market rate or for family instead of affordable, meaning change.
They can already use it for family.
Yeah.
But to change it from affordable or family, we, it would, it would need a covenant amendment or some amendment to the code to allow that.
So if it's for affordable now, for one, I could change it to family use without going through any hoops.
It already is family.
Both are, both are acceptable. Neither is acceptable. No.
Question, is there an obligation to have a tenant?
I mean, you can have affordable housing, but if you just sit there empty.
Yeah.
Okay. For purposes of, uh, definitions, when we say affordable housing, we're talking about subsidized housing, correct?
No.
No.
We're talking about
Price.
moderate income housing for the most part, or family, or family, which, which, and you can charge your family whatever you want.
This is aside from that issue.
This is, I just wanted to go once in R20.
Yeah, and there is a definition of affordable.
Are we talking about publicly subsidized housing?
No, no. So you, you, you can have whomever you want in there.
In this case?
Yes.
Right.
Chapter 150.
What I'm getting at here is.
Ask counsel. She'll give you.
Chapter 150 will give you the, the, the definitions and, and what constitutes affordable. It's in chapter 150. It's referred to in this section.
Okay. Uh, any?
For family use and I want it to be an affordable structure, I go through a committee, I, what's the process of getting that?
What this, what this piece of legislation will do is will allow you to, to make that structure 280 feet, right, is the minimum. So you could then make that an affordable, uh, housing structure, affordable housing or for a family member.
Presumably you could, like, somebody has to control that I'm actually gonna give it to them if it's not for family use.
Right. Counsel, yes.
This goes through the process outlined in chapter 150 and also in, in the building department. So they would, they would, and that really it would be the covenants that would require you to comply with the standards of 150. That would be put on there as a condition of approval of the building permit, probably.
But you'd still be subject to Suffolk County Health Department requirements and would you be subject to ZBA if you need a lot coverage variance?
It depends. There are some relaxations in this section of the code 300 dash nine point one two you'd have to look through. Um, but if you don't meet the exact relaxations provided in this code section, you would have to ZBA.
So it's 70% for some.
With this scenario, like your, your son moves in for two years and then your son moves, what happens then?
Well, that's what he just asked.
I think that we're going outside of what this specific legislation is. This is, all we're doing with this is shrinking the size.
These other questions are outside of this.
600, 600. So it can be anything in between, 280 up to 600. It's just the idea that for those people that don't have enough lots. It's just the idea that for those people that don't have enough lot space to build a six hundred and not have to go for a variance. This would allow them that flexibility.
Thank you, Mazia.
Thanks, Isaiah.
We have somebody's hand up online. One second.
We have somebody.
Somebody here.
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. This is Michael Daley calling in, and I'm, my first comment is I'm reading a comment from Brian E. Fraj, who is a co-leader of East End YIMBY and a village resident on Montauk Avenue Extension. Where she says, and she's working, that's why she couldn't join us tonight. She says, I was so happy to learn that this amendment to the village code is being considered. I remember celebrating last year after the village board approved a code amendment to make it easier for residents to create ADUs on their properties. And I remember being dismayed when I learned that the the size was set at five hundred square feet. I was encouraged when I was told that that was going to be revisited. And here we are this night, so thanks you, thank you so much. Thanks to the mayor and the trustees for considering reducing the size requirements from five hundred to two hundred and eighty square feet. This was one of the hurdles my family has faced in being able to pursue building an ADU on our property because our lot size and our family needs was just too small to accommodate a five hundred square foot ADU. I will note that there are still two big hurdles to us pursuing an ADU. One is the potential tax implications of adding to our total square footage on our property. And the second is the very high cost of building even something, you know, around or under five hundred square feet. I'd be interested in to hear from the architects who designed the concepts published in The Express about who might build such an ADU and for what price. Our entire purpose of building an ADU is to rent it out as an affordable, at an affordable rate. But so far, the quotes we've gotten to build one make it financially prohibitive to do so. All in all, thank you. My family is one step closer to being able to build an ADU and rent it out to an essential worker in our community. So those are Brian E.'s comments, and then my comments are, you know, kudos for doing this. This is a terrific move. I think you've done some research to see that there are, you know, in a in a village such as ours with smaller homes, not as many McMansions, two hundred and eighty square feet is is a terrific size and will allow people not necessarily only to build, you know, freestanding ADUs on their property, but convert rooms and segments of their homes to ADUs for, you know, family members, essential workers, youth, seniors. And this is a terrific move. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Michael. Okay.
My name is Maxine Leo, and I'm a local site harbor architect. And I'm also in favor of reducing the minimum area for affordable house apartments to the proposed two hundred and eighty square feet. I also think that the more flexible you make the code, the more people will be encouraged to make apartments. So now there's a provision in the code for relative of the homeowner to substitute for a tenant in an accessory apartment. A variation on this idea is to permit the homeowner, who at some point might have a need of an affordable apartment themselves, whether because of health, age, or economics, to live in their own accessory apartment and rent the larger part of their house. It would still be adding an affordable apartment to the community, and the homeowner would not be excluded from benefiting from it. And I hope that you'll consider adding this option to the code. Thank you.
That sounds very interesting.
Yeah.
Yes. Any other comments? Motion to close the public hearing?
I'm with it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Kors. Do I have a, are all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to adopt?
I'm with it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second, seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried.
Okay.
That brings us to a local law to create village code, chapter two fifty-three, tree preservation. So.
This is a continued public hearing.
Continued public hearing.
It hasn't changed from the last public hearing. The board is considering input from the public.
Yes. Do we have any comments on the current piece of legislation? Yes.
Before I read the statement that you all received, we did revise it, and you had two versions, so I will send a version that is complete. And I did want to distribute yet a third. But unfortunately, Jane is stuck at the airport, so she's trying to zoom in. I don't know if she will be able to. But we would like to thank the mayor and trustees for setting a tone that clearly haves the public the receptivity to public opinion and input. It's very refreshing, it really is. We believe many letters from residents have been submitted to the mayor and trustees in favor of the twelve-inch D V H. And we would certainly be pleased that these individuals from Saic Harbor Express and Saic Seac Harbor also support the overall tree legislation, and in particular, the twelve-inch D V H. So with that, I'd like to just read into the record the final version of what we sent you. It's maybe redundant for you, but helpful possibly for the people present from online. Dear Mayor Gardella, Deputy Mayor Hay, Trustees Kors, Kane, and Plum, I might add, we never couldn't figure out whether we did it alphabetically or by seniority. But we're encouraged that you, Mayor Gardella and trustees, are actively committed to tree preservation and are listening to the opinions and wishes of Saic Harbor residents. We both would be productive to clarify a few points. These are headings. One, the eight-to-twelve inch D V H versus the fifteen-to-eighteen inch D V H diameter is breast height. We spoke with a number of well-established, well-respected, local ISA certified arborists and landscape business owners who gave permission to be publicly named in the strong support of the eight-to-twelve D V H. Most importantly, these arborists noted that neither fifteen D V, fifteen-inch D V H nor an eighteen D V H will meet the standard goals of the proposed legislation. The villages indicated that they have received advice from professionals suggesting an eighteen-inch D V H as the minimum diameter requiring a tree removal permit. This position dramatically conflicts with the certified arborist advice we have received to date. These arborist recommendations have been made public on Zoom, in person, and in writing to the village. And among many points that is made is that a twelve-inch D V H tree is probably at least thirty, fifty years old. And an eighteen-inch D V H is seventy-five years, well, random species. But the age, size, and species of trees directly correlates with the dangers we receive from it. Tree removal, especially in large trees, has serious multigenerational impact. By endorsing a twelve-inch D V H threshold, threshold for removal permits, we are acknowledging the importance of trees and their canopies to our community. Two, this was a conversation from last time, native versus non-native versus species. So we did our homework. For a few hundred years, our village landscape has evolved through plantings of native and non-native shrubs and other flora. In fact, many species were imported decades ago through trade and travel and have subsequently become naturalized to our flora and environment. To simplify the code and its enforcement, we got clarification from the chief of bureau of invasive species ecosystem health, the division of lands and forests from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. We suggest that all these species listed as prohibited or regulated invasive species by the New York State Regulation six N Y C R R, Part five seventy-five, prohibited and regulated invasion species, N Y S, may be removed with approval regardless of D V H. Further, since some non-native species have become naturalized, we recommend that certain species, for example, but not limited to mulled spruce, tree heaven, which are not only common to our area, but also part of the historic landscape, be given greater consideration before a removal permit is granted. Non-native, native, non-native, non-invasive, and naturalized trees should be treated equally and be subject to the same twelve-inch D V H requirement so that our landscape can continue to thrive. Item three, property owners. And I think this is a really important statement. Saic Harbor has a history of preservation through legislation. Reality is that anyone who loses Saic Harbor is subject to the rules and regulations that exist in our code, including what we can or can't do with our houses. Permission is required from various boards for any number of physical elements of our houses, whether it be paint color, child, window treatments. Neighbors and properties are interconnected, and when someone clears a property, it impacts their surrounding neighbor's privacy, their views, the noise level, and the general enjoyment of their property. The environmental impact of trees on our landscape, the aesthetic beauty of the lands of the village, and the enhanced village to our properties is just as significant to the character of our village as the homes we live in, but with the added value of being beneficial to the health and well-being of all who live here. Four, clear-cutting legislation has evolved. And we're acknowledging that this in fact did start in response to clear-cutting of lots, but and it did result in clear-cutting prohibition being added to the code several years ago. And yet, unfortunately, lot clearing and removal has continued at an alarming rate. Consequently, the tree preservation has evolved and will be applicable to developed and wooded properties alike. This shift acknowledges the broader recognition that trees are a vital resource which supports our entire community in multiple significant ways. And finally, the future. At a recent meeting, it was stated that residents won't necessarily cut down smaller trees with the eighteen-inch D V H threshold is used. But conversely, it doesn't mean that they won't. Indeed, what's passed is prologue. So we look forward to the resolution of any remaining issues and soon having effective tree preservation legislation included in the code. So we really thank you for your patience during this entire, for me, seven-year process, but I'm now punch over, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, all right. Thank you. I'd like to go to, Ed, are you ready to speak?
You want in the room, maybe?
Anthony's.
Did you want to speak? Yes, you.
Thank, why don't you let the other folks go and I'll, and let me go towards the end, Tom.
You got it. Anybody else, Anthony? Add your hand up.
Hello, Anthony Vermandorf, City Indian Street. Just briefly, I want to thank you for passing the reduction in size of the accessory structures. You know how I feel about that. That's why I didn't even come up this time. But as far as the tree preservation law goes, I think my, and I sent you an email yesterday, my concerns are the same as they have been from the beginning. And my, you know, I've talked about the potential for having trees that are in the in the location where a I A septic system needs to be installed to be exempt from this. And also trees that are very close to an existing building or structure. I think failing that, you know, not having, if those can't be unregulated, unregulated activities with no permit required, I had suggested that no permit, I think a good compromise might be to just waive the requirement for a certified arborist to do the report on the tree and just have it go straight to architectural review board. Because it's possible that that tree, right where that septic system needs to be, might actually be a perfectly healthy tree. It just has to be taken down because the septic system, in which case the architectural review board would would review that and say, okay, we understand why that has to that tree has to has to go, which seems kind of silly to have to hire an arborist to tell you, well, this is a healthy tree, right? This, the second thing, the the third thing I want to discuss too is just just kind of just more of a practical level on how this is going to be how this is going to be work. You know, we've talked about having all the trees depicted on the survey, right? You know, survey is an eleven-by-seventeen piece of paper. There's already a lot of information that's having to go onto that survey. You've got all your lot coverage calculations. You've got your building coverage calculations, your rear yard calculations, your 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 primary and accessory setback calculation lines. You've got your new and proposed work. You've got your two-foot contours. All that stuff is already required on the survey. And now we're having yet another thing that's having to be put on the survey for what might be just a, you know, five or six thousand square foot lot. That's a lot of information. So I would suggest as an alternative, what you can do, instead of having the the tree, the trees depicted on a survey is habitat depicted on a landscape plan. Could be by a life, you could make the requirement that it's by a landscape architect or something like that, but just so that there is you're not trying to put so much information on a single eleven-by-seventeen sheet of paper.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thanks, Anthony.
Kind of makes sense.
Kind of. You could always print the larger, right?
It's, you know, it's with a survey, it's going to be, you know. Lots inside harbor are so small that even if you're printing out a survey on on, you know, a site plan on a twenty-four by thirty-six inch piece of paper, it's, you know, it may not have all, it's still hard to get all that intel on it. Just suggesting that there could be two separate documents that you can submit, the survey and a site and a site plan that is specifically for vegetation.
This leads me to a point I'd like to make, is that, okay? I I think that the impetus of, is somewhere along the lines we were talking about, the impetus of this originally was clearing. Lot clearing, which people were shocked by lots were clear-cutted, clear-cut. Then it segued into tree preservation. My concern is that the, if you're going to have the building department enforce these, I believe strongly that this, sorry, the survey and the site plan should have an area delineated of where you're going to clear before you start. And in addition to the trees, the significant trees, whatever caliber we decide. Because otherwise, no one, I I think some of these lots have been cleared by people who don't know that they're clearing rules.
But, you know, I I mean, I think we're maybe talking about two separate things. You're thinking about, you know, lots that are not clear, you know, not built on. I'm talking about small properties in the part of the village that are already fully cleared, but maybe have three or four nice trees on them.
Unless they don't have a clearing shown, that's that's no problem.
True, but you still have to depict those trees on the survey along with a whole lot of other information.
Trees and the clearing and/or.
Or, well, so I would say two things. I do think the concern would be for I A systems, which we are all supportive of and and want to look to do that, but just to ensure that the architect, as well as the homeowner, really look at all the options as opposed to just picking an easy spot where a tree is, you know, so if we make it too easy that, oh, I can put it wherever I want. So I think that you would have to almost prove that there's no other option. And with the the New York State rule that you can put the I A systems under a driveway now, if you so choose, you have to choose to do that. If presumably if there's a driveway there already, we wouldn't have to be worrying about trees. So it's just something we we have to think about that.
I I get that. I'm not trying to make, you know, the I A systems make make an excuse or anything for them, right? And, you know, I mean, I've had projects that I've done, like two fifty-eight Main Street is an excellent example. We did, you know, the everybody wanted to keep the two great trees in that front yard. That was the only place where we could put the septic system. We really did a lot of gymnastics with that septic system to make it work and still be able to save those trees. We thought we were going to lose one of them, and it seems like all both of them are are still healthy and thriving. So that's that's great. So it it can certainly be done. And I think that's that's where the ARB comes into into play with this. ARB is going to say, hey, you're removing this tree to put a septic system here. They're smart people. They can say, oh, well, there's, you know, why can't you put it over here instead of here, right?
Right, and that's that's part of the normal conversation. And I I actually do think I agree with you, Anthony, that it is a lot of information to have on the drawings, either for the ZBA when they're looking at pyramid laws, and I mean, if 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 trees are going to be. And I mean, if, if, if trees are going to be on there as well. I think if the landscape architects or, or, you know, who, who's going to be supplying that, because we are showing what's currently existing, what's being proposed, what's in the plane, what's not. There's so much going on. I do think it would be easier for the boards to have the two separate documents.
Yeah, and, and also I would say that, you know, with the ZBA, for example, I'm doing multiple drawings for the ZBA. I'm doing, instead of drawings, it's color-coded floor plans for, for setback relief. I'm doing another floor, another drawing, which is the pyramid, that color-coded, plus other information. So I don't think it's, it's, you know, it's not like I'm going into the ZBA with one drawing to show every possible thing. So, you know, that's why I think with the surveys and site plans, it could be two separate pages. It's more clear to do it that way.
Certainly something we should think about, that's. Thank you.
There was someone, yeah, in the middle row here that had their hand up? Yes, I believe you're next.
Hi, um, Janine Carter. I live at 153 Hampton Street. The proud owner of a very, very mature legacy. It's helpful. And I was going to tell you a moving story about my first contact with an arborist, which was weirdly today, to save that particular tree. But I'll cut to the chase because Eileen covered almost every point that I thought was relevant to your consideration of this legislation. I think, as trustee King pointed out, it creates a space for pause. I'm uncomfortable, which is the only thing that I need to say on my behalf. I'm uncomfortable throughout benches. I feel more comfortable with eight. The eight to 12 I thought was very reasonable. The 12 is uncomfortably okay. I hope you will lean in that direction. When I look at the trees in Sag Harbor and Stanton and I was talking to you, I think of what went into planning and planting such things. I'm sorry, I am moved by that legacy. I hope that 18 inches isn't too much, uh, 12 inches isn't too much to ask to have anyone who might not be thinking about it too hard, or who's new, or who has other ambitions to stop and think and consider that specific heritage that is the legacy of our children and our village. That was a moment to add, thank you.
Thank you.
Here I am at 896 Hampton Street. I'm here and I want to read a letter from Derek Galen. I think it deserves being read because it covers some different territory than I think what we've been hearing over the last couple of weeks. And especially refers to something that Anthony mentioned. So Derek Galen is at 36 Richards Drive in Sag Harbor. On hot summer days, when I've turned into Richards Drives here in Sag Harbor where I live, I've always felt the temperature drop. It's always felt much cooler and been quieter and calmer under the canopy of trees. I can leave the windows open and air conditioning off and enjoy the fresh air of nature. In recent years, however, houses on my street have been razed and most of the trees cut down on the improved lots. Now the sun beats down on these new houses, so they need to have HVAC systems running to keep the houses cool. This consumes energy, creates more greenhouse gases, and leads to even hotter summer days. Second point he makes. When I had my septic system upgraded to a low nitrogen system, I went to great lengths to protect the trees in my yard. Neither the land surveyor nor the engineers took into account the location of the trees. I drafted on top of the survey the location of the trees and drafted the required location of the tanks to minimize damage to any root systems. I had used both backyard, side yard, and front yard of the syst, for the system to preserve every single tree. Luckily, one of the engineers accepted my survey. When I stood guard as the excavators racked havoc, they hit almost every tree, hooked the electrical wires through the house, damaged the stairwells, decks, patios, and tried to dig too close to the trees. Amazingly though, they did not manage to kill any trees other than some saplings where the old septic tank was imploded. It required extra work and care, so it was doable. Unfortunately, that effort and care is not always available and/or valued, and legislation enforcement is required to preserve the environment. He goes on, my departed mother, proud daughter of a logger, gave me some hemlock seedlings, seedlings almost 20 years ago to plant in my yard. I had to dig them up and replant them for the septic improvement. These trees, after almost 20 years, are only one to two inches in diameter. Of the approximately 75 trees in my .23 acre yard, only four over 18 inches. That means in the proposed legislation, 95% of the trees have no protection. Biggest tree in my yard is possibly the only one that should be cut down and due to its condition, it's out to the house. It's pretty amazing the wildlife we enjoy in our yard. We have squirrels, possums, rabbits, snakes, geers, raccoons, turkeys, moles, voles, songbirds, raptors, and a lot of insects. I realize how many people prefer a more sterile environment, and I understand some clearing. I also realize how much work it is to trim trees, clean up leaves, catkins, I don't know what catkins are, and spider webs. I do it all myself. I believe the benefits are worth it. Thanks to all who have worked to preserve the trees in Sag Harbor Village. Please decrease the size of the trees that will require a permit to be removed from 18 inches to 12 or less in the proposed legislation. And I just want to comment, when he's talking about the septic, and I agree with what Jean is saying. It's like, it's really easy to just put a straight line in and say, that's where the septic has to go. I'm going through this now, and it doesn't have to be that way, but it does take some work. Because there's not only where you're citing the various pieces of the septic system, it's accessing that location from the street where the heavy machinery that comes in, that digs the holes, that puts in the equipment, yada, 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 yada. It's a big deal, and it does take some time. And I think it's really worth that time. I have a statement here for myself. But I think that the only part that I'm really going to talk about here is that the trees at Sag Harbor belong to us as a community, just like the bays and coves. And it's not particularly more important where their roots reside. It is a common resource for all of us. And the trees, they calm us, they soothe us. They're a source of inspiration and beauty and elegance. And I have to think, we have to be very careful because once they calm down, they do not come back. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Trustees, my name's Robert Pagano. My wife Debbie and I resided 268 Division Street. Prior to living in Sag Harbor at that time, Debbie and I lived in Manhattan for 10 years and before that in Atlanta, also for 10 years. Manhattan and Atlanta are very different places, but they have one thing in common, Frederick Paul Alston's footprint with Piedmont Park in Atlanta and Central Park in New York City. The leadership of these cities understood the importance of green spaces and wonderful trees well before climate crisis was top of mind. Maybe these parks were a clever, deliberate planned distraction or placation from runaway growth and development. But even if that's the case, their legacy is the creation of thousands of individuals that have seen the best and worst in environmental preservation all in the span of a few hundred feet. My wife and I are just two of those thousands. Sag Harbor outside of Mash Park must work within the confines of the existing village to create that same beauty and preservation that we see in our greatest parks. And the tool that we're trying to give ourselves is regulation that protects mature trees. It's the most basic need to support the environment and this area's natural beauty. A 12-inch diameter gives us a chance. At 18 inches, we have neither a chance or, in my opinion, and the opinion of others here tonight, meaningful regulations. And I've, and I've looked at the potential compromises and nuances, and I, and I agree with many of them. So, you know, I, I think there's room to work here. But I'm, I'm just reiterating to please adopt a meaningful tree regulation inclusive of a 12-inch diameter limit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience would like to speak? Yes. I'd like to recognize our former mayor Kathleen Mulcahy.
Actually, for this conversation, I am mayor number two in the tree drama that's gone long. I am mayor number four.
Oh, great.
So.
We're so close.
But we're getting there.
Yes. I think it was the first week after I was sworn in that Eileen and Jane came into my office. And so, how do we get this done? And we got some of it done, the clear-cutting and things like that. But I don't even recall why the trees got removed along the way or why they went down the past couple of years. But thank you very much for getting this done. I do shudder to think how many trees came down in between those four and a half years. I don't want to see more trees come down. So in the words of trustee Porish, which I heard many times, don't let perfect get in the way of good. Get this thing done. Please get it done at 12. If 12 becomes two owners for the homeowners, think about redoing it. But get it done, get it done strongly, get it done right, get it done now, and then it can be adjusted. If, if like every five minutes, somebody's in here saying, oh, this is more than we can bear, then we look at it again, but just get it done, please. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We got, okay.
Bob Myers, Snatchwood Jefferson Street. I'm speaking for Sage Sag Harbor. I'll be brief. Sage Sag Harbor is in favor and has been in favor of this legislation for the, can't believe it's been seven years and are in favor of the 12-inch versus 18-inch.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
How you doing? Jackson Dodge, Jackson Dodge and Company. Thank you, board, for hearing. I just wanted to come down and be part of this. This has been ongoing for a long time, and it, it truly feels as a local kid growing up in the Hamptons, generational in East Hampton, but making my home Sag Harbor. I felt like we were behind across the country, across the world in, in some respects to tree preservation. I'm a certified arborist since I was 17. Past president of Long Island Arbicultural Association, graduate of Farmingdale College, Alfred and Delhi Schools of Forestry and Horticulture. And I can truly say, it's not too late. And, and what was said tonight is so powerful. It's not about getting it perfect, it's good. The number one thing with trees, it's a numbers game. More trees we can preserve. If something should go bad, and I think everyone's seen 114 with the southern pine beetle, how it just decimated the whole ecosystem. It's the number of trees, is that's what's going to recover. If we start cutting at 12 or 13 inches, and there will be no second or third generation to replace those larger trees that are taken later or lost later. The climate has gone crazy. We're seeing bigger storms, and we're seeing more effect on larger trees. Whereas, yes, we're very fortunate. On the east end of Long Island, there's a very large supply of trees to replace what was there. But why mess with it? Those trees take years after being transplanted to really take hold and become the historic trees to match the historic village we live in. So I just, again, I want to be part of this, put my name on record, that I support the 12 inches, and that is, I'm, I'm very grateful for everyone up here.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Please.
So in your experience in your business?
Yes.
Are there, have you run into other municipalities that have tree preservation laws and what the diameter of their trees are?
So everywhere is unique. We know that North Haven has just implemented a permitting process for larger trees. That's a wooded area. Here in Village, I mean, the approach is more of, there's different cities in California and Connecticut that have permits with a higher presence of people and residences and structure, whereas they're more strict, let's just say. And I don't want to get into details because it's all different everywhere. I think it's very specific Sag Harbor Village to the trees and the landscape now. Just in the last, I mean, 46 have been coming to this village forever. The skyline has changed, not just in the housing and the building, but in the, the coverage, it can be. Head up at all?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you, if, if you know of any specific diameter of tree that, and other municipalities that has been preserved?
It ranges.
It ranges?
12 is not unfair, you know.
Right.
Anything larger, you're just, you're, you're cutting the legs out from underneath you.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
I'm president of the historical museum, and please take younger trees for our history. What'd you say, Anthony?
Preserve our younger trees for our history.
Who said that? I, yeah, I agree. Oh, I'm sorry, I just, they're, they're in our history. Yeah. I can remember my mother's child.
What's next? Okay, anybody else?
Everybody else?
Any other comments from the audience? We have somebody's hand up? Bunch of people that have their hand up. Do you want, you still want to go last, Mr. Hollander? Just nod your head, yes or no? Yeah, you want to go last? Okay, somebody other than Mr. Hollander? Douglas.
Hi, Douglas Newby again, 244 Madison. So I'd like to read into the record a letter that I sent to you, Mayor Peddella, and the board of trustees. But before I do that, I'd like to add that what we're talking about is asking or requiring permission to cut trees of a certain size down. It's not saying that they cannot be cut down under certain circumstances. So I think in a lot of the discussion, there seems to be some confusion on that point. certain circumstances. So I think in a lot of the discussion, there seems to be some confusion on that point. But the introduction to the legislation, I think, really addresses the issue very well. The legislative intent of the proposed local law is to protect the mature tree canopy and abundance of trees. They're a fundamental part of the village's unique character. A stated tree is, quote, "provides significant carbon reduction, shade, impede soil erosion, aid in water absorption and retention, inhibit runoff and flooding, enhance air quality by absorbing carbon dioxide and releasing oxygen, mitigate noise, provide a natural habitat for wildlife, provide privacy screening, conserve energy, enhance property values, and add to the aesthetic quality and character of the entire community." Now is the time to pass the tree preservation legislation. How many trees have been cut down in the seven or eight years that Aileen and Jane have been fighting for legislation to be passed? Proponents of large diameter breast height threshold argue that people have the right to do what they want with their own property. Of course, that is not true. Anyone who brought property in Sag Harbor since nineteen seventy-three bought into the restrictions to go with a designated historic district, including the color of their front door. Setting a threshold always risks unintended consequences. The intent is that a permit will be required before a tree of greater size than the threshold can be cut down. The risk is that developers think it is all right to cut down any tree smaller than that threshold. Therefore, it's essential that the DBH threshold err on the side of caution. There is a consensus among arborists that the right limit is in the eight to twelve inch range. Erring on the side of caution suggests closer to eighteen inches is the right answer. And certainly, the threshold should not be greater than twelve inches. This doesn't mean that larger trees cannot be cut down. It means that there are checks and balances before the tree is removed. We're concerned about non-native invasive species being excluded from the clearing restrictions. There's an important distinction between non-native and invasive. But simply a non-native species is not invasive if it does not harm native species. Non-invasive, non-native species should not be exempted from the clearing regulations. Once this legislation is passed, we, and I should have added, or should have said at the beginning, that this was a joint letter with Catherine Levy and myself. We believe that the village should consider additional requirements to mitigate the effects of tree and vegetation removal, and to encourage tree vegetation planting and transplanting. With its tiny footprint of less than two square miles, Sag Harbor cannot solve the world's or even eastern Long Island's problems. But we can do our bit, and at the very least, ensure we are not contributing to those problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. And thank you for making the distinction between non-native and invasive. Because there is a definite distinction, Catherine.
If I, if I add to that, although that was quite comprehensive, thank you, Douglas. I just want to, I just want to add that I think we all have to be aware that flooding is going to be an increasing problem in this village. I think, you know, we all saw these intense storms in the summer. And trees are our friends in mitigating against flooding. The Sierra Club has put a lot of attention into this issue, into trying to prevent clear cutting. And really, this has been a movement across the country for a long time. We are really not leading, a leading edge on this. But I just want to quote something from one of their many articles about the importance of trees in mitigating against flooding and the other ravages of climate change. They say, "Mature trees have important environmental functions. They act as anchors for the soil with their extensive root systems, thereby preventing erosion and soil damage. In addition, on rainy days, the leaves slow down the rate that water falls to the ground. These characteristics help prevent the kind of flooding increasingly seen in overdeveloped areas." We, you know, we are not magically immune from climate change. And I think that if we allow the vast majority of our trees to be cut down, and if the threshold is eighteen inches, it will be the vast majority of our trees. We are going to regret it ten years from now when we see more and more flooding in this village. So I just hope the board will seriously consider that issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Silas Martyr, one seventy-five Main Street. I want to summarize some points I made at the last meeting. I'm a professional landscaper. My family has owned and operated Martyr's Landscaping and Nursery for almost fifty years. I ask the board passes the tree preservation law, just as municipalities across Long Island, New York State, and America have already done. Tree preservation is fundamental to public health, welfare, quality of life, and property value. It is required for mitigating the harmful effects of climate crisis. Trees protect the soil from erosion. They provide habitats for, on which wildlife depends, including beneficial insects, migratory birds, and endangered species monitored by federal agencies. I ask that the law require trees with a DBH of eight to twelve inches or more to be preserved. My concern with legislation that sets a DBH of eighteen inches is that it would mean that many, any trees with that DBH or less than eighteen could be removed. The eighteen inch limit is likely to help you achieve the aim of the proposed law as written. This might confuse members of the public, who may think that trees that they are accustomed to seeing around their homes and the village will be protected, though they are not. In terms of human gain, the benefit trees bring to people is not governed by size. Trees that are twelve, eight, or eighteen inches, up to eighteen inches, have, of DBH, have value, require protection, and should be included in any meaningful preservation law. As previously stated, I confirmed my understanding of the numbers with my father, Charles Martyr, with Gregory Gutter, ISA certified arborist, and with other tree care specialists. I should add that in addition to landscaping company, we are growers and suppliers in New York State and many other areas. Provide trees to designers, architects, installers, and the general public. My family even has a tree museum in Springs. But the importance, Martyr's could have provided a much larger list of names. But the importance of common sense environmental preservation legislation should not be reduced to a battle over how many industry friends a landscape professional can get to signing a petition that does not take the interests of the community and members of the public into account. I support the immediate passage of meaningful, effective, clearly worded tree preservation law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Silas.
What caliber did he recommend?
Eight to twelve. Anybody else, Justin?
She's unmuted, but.
Hi. I think the name on my, on the list there for me does not reveal that. My name is Jerry Maslanka. I live at six Carver Street. And I just have to say, I don't have anything fresh to say, but listening to person after person, many respected people in our community speak, all in favor of what I would think is a very conservative perspective, to be careful and to go with the minimum size, which is, what I have heard is eight to twelve inches. I agree, we can, if it's a problem, we can look at this down the road. But we, we don't have sequoias. We have a lot of trees that, you know, they're not huge. And almost everything on my property would be gone. And I think, and I'm ever forever thankful that my neighbor across the street came before the board, and you, some of you members looked at their plan. And most of the trees were going to be cut down. And that person, the developer, looked at it and decided not to. And I look out my kitchen window, and now I still see mature trees. We didn't have that law at the time. But I think that what is being proposed here now to be conservative and go with the eight to twelve inches. Thank you very much for all of your time and effort on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you? Good morning, Simon.
Can you see me? Oops. Sorry. I really wasn't planning to speak, but I, I wanted to say two things. I don't know if you can see this. But I, I, I just drove through my neighborhood. I'm at one hundred Hillside Drive East. And just looked at the myriad of trees that are around. I also went back, I was an old, started as an old math major. And I said, eighteen inches diameter, I think we need to make it real for folks. And if you took your hand and put it in front of you, that is the circumference of an eighteen inch tree. Think about it, you know, those who do ballet, or you just put it in front. It's, it's, it's about five feet, yeah, a couple of inches here and there. Huge. There are not many trees in my area that I drive that are larger than that. So that most of the trees that I see would come down. And these trees are decades old. Because many of the trees are untouched and they're original trees. To think that these trees could be taken down is just unimaginable. I am in favor of the eight to twelve inch area. Do the math. A tree would have to be bigger than this to be, to remain. Which trees are around you? That you can wrap your hands and touch your fingers around. And anything above that would be taken down. But anything less than that would be gone. That's all I have to say. Please.
Thank you.
Eight to twelve.
Thank you, Renee. Anyone else? Mr. Hollander, are you ready to speak? We'll have Ed comment.
All right. Can you hear me? All right.
Yes.
Well, I got to tell you, I love living in a village where so many people love trees. I think it's a great thing. And I love living with everybody who's there. I want to say thank you to the board and everybody who's there. And since it's getting late, I won't talk for any more than thirty or forty minutes. Want to say that I, I appreciate the enthusiasm of, of April and Oliver Gang, and Bob, and Save Sag Harbor, you know, Renee, everybody who's spoken about trees, Silas, because we're all basically coming from the same point. And I think it's great that we live in a village where we have leadership that really cares about trees and realizes how valuable they are for the village. Right now, I want to speak as a professional landscape architect, as opposed to, you know, a resident who lives over on Bayview Avenue. Let me just start a little bit about how I got into being a landscape architect. And this won't take long, I promise. But back in nineteen seventy-six, I was a, a young, long-haired student at Vassar College that fell in love with the trees there and made my senior project identifying all the trees on the campus so it could become an official arboretum. And that's really where I, I fell in love with trees. I went from there to the New York Botanical Gardens to study horticulture and ecology for a couple of years with the idea of becoming an urban forester. And ended up at the University of Pennsylvania, getting my master's degree in landscape architecture. That was long enough ago where, at this point, I'm a, I'm a fellow of the American Society of Landscape Architects. I've received the Arthur Ross Award of Lifetime Achievement in Landscape Design. I'm one of two or three landscape architects in the world that have been named to the Architectural Digest one hundred. We've won any number of awards from the National Chapter of American Society of Landscape Architects, local, the Royal Institute of British Architects. We've done three books, a movie. I was on the board of the New York Restoration Project, where one of our great accomplishments was the Million Tree Project, where we managed to plant a million trees in New York City to the benefit of everybody there. I'm on the board of the Macaric Center for Ecological Studies at the University of Pennsylvania. I'm on the Dean's Council at Spitzer School of Architecture, where we provide fellowships to economically challenge students to pay for their educations so they can continue in this profession, which has so many benefits for so many people. In Sag Harbor, you know, I worked with, with April and Sandra when we did an enormous restoration of Oakland Cemetery, where we organized any number of arborists and landscapers. We probably had a hundred people out there preserving Oakland Cemetery, preserving Eastville Cemetery. We worked on master plans for the Whaling Museum as well as the Nana Park. I worked with April and Eric to do the gardens and get the plantings done at the church. We did a lot of work on Longworth, Steinbeck Park. And I think one of my favorite things, I remember reading in April's letter about the trees along, along Long Island Avenue, which are wonderful crape myrtles that I planted in honor of my mother. That might be the last thing I said, but I thought that was important. General, I don't have any real skin in this game as to one size or the other, except that we really do need, and we all agree that we need an enforceable code that will truly preserve the trees and the landscape of that village. And to do that, it has to be respected by the people of the village. And something that they feel that they buy into, they understand, and not something that's just being imposed on them by a group of other citizens. You know, there is, there is the logistical issue of how do you identify every tree over a certain size? How do you go through the, the permitting issue? But I think, I think that can, that can get resolved. One important point that came up tonight, which I think needs to be discussed, is there really needs to be a distinction between tree preservation and clearing restrictions. They are different things, and I think clearing needs to be dealt with in a much more stringent way because clearing unimproved property is something that really impacts the, the entire ecosystem of the village more than a homeowner removing tree A or tree B. A tree preservation code should be directed towards keeping the larger, more important trees in the village that contribute to its overall character and landscape. I could see where the tree preservation code, you know, might, might pertain to trees over eighteen inches, where the clearing code might use an eight to twelve inch range because they are different codes dealing with different areas. I would just like to read a letter, which I have emailed to the board, which has been signed by twenty-five different arborists, landscape professionals who live or work in the village. And then I'll identify who they are so that they're not just unnamed, unnamed people. And I'll read quickly. Dear Board of Trustees, thank you for including myself and Fred Hoffman from Bartlett Tree Care in the discussions regarding the new Sag Harbor Village Tree Protection Ordinance. At the meeting we had in Village Hall with members of the trustees, the village attorney, and a couple of community members, Fred and I both agreed that using a size of eighteen inch DBH as the minimum size requiring review and permitting was the most appropriate. I have read there continues to be a push from some non-professionals to reduce this to a twelve inch size. We frequently plant trees that are twelve inch caliper or larger. And so I don't think it's factually correct to say that these are mature trees. Trees tend to put on about a half an inch of caliper growth per year. So it's very possible for a twelve inch caliper tree to be twenty-five to thirty years old. Varies between oak trees, sycamore, maple trees, things like that. There's absolutely differences. But I think that general range is accepted in the industry. There are, you know, thousands of trees within the village that fall within that category. And unless the board wants a permit required to remove almost every tree in the village, which would be an administrative nightmare for the building department, and would start to lead to people just moving around that, I think an eighteen inch minimum makes, makes the most sense. You know, when, when rules seem unwise, or rules seem unjust, or rules seem unreasonable, people tend to just ask for forgiveness rather than asking for permission. And what we really want is for the people of the village of Sag Harbor to recognize the importance of trees in this environment ecologically. I mean, people have spoken beautifully about the value of trees, so I won't repeat that. I think we all agree that we want the residents of the village to respect this code and to abide by this code because of the value of, of what we have here. The people that have signed on to this are the following arborists. Fred Bartlett from Bartlett Tree Care, Amanda Dickerson from Bartlett Tree Care, Mary Lee Sitrino from Bartlett Tree Care, Brendan Hesse from Bartlett Tree Care, Kim Wren from Groundworks Landscaping, Paul DeRago from Bartlett Tree Care, Anthony Remy from Remy Tree Care, Eddie Corkman from Summerhill Landscaping, who's done so much work for us in the village, Declan Blackmore, who's worked with the village so much from Summerhill Landscaping, John Calbacker and Roger Miller from J and R Landscaping, who have worked in the village and helped out with Steinbeck Park, Tim Blank Tree Care, who's an arborist, Rebecca Schultz, who's an arborist with Summerhill, with, with Bartlett Tree Care, Joseph Leek from Brightview Landscaping, obviously, myself. And then a list of other landscape architects who have spent their careers involved with this. Mary Ann Connolly, who did the original design for Steinbeck Park, Chris LaGuardia from LaGuardia Design, who's recently moved into the village and is a world-renowned landscape architect. Tim Rump from Arius Landscape Design in Southampton. Michael Derrick, who's the landscape architect at Landscape Details, along with Zachary Crawford and Chris Millman, all of whom are with Landscape Details. Bailey Briggs, who is a Pearson graduate, who recently got her master's degree from the New University of Virginia. And finally, Dean Gamolka, and I leave Dean for last, because Dean is not only a landscape architect, he is the past chairman of the ARB. And he agrees that eighteen inches is the appropriate size for what we should do. Now, having said all of that, you know, we, we live in a world that seems to be filled with division and great passion and energy that go into tribal disagreements. And I think that the thing here is we all love trees. We all want to preserve trees. There's a large group of people that think eight to twelve inches is great. There's a group of professionals that says, no, don't do eighteen inches. And maybe the thing for the board to do is to say, listen, there's passion on both sides. There's reason on both sides. One group says twelve inches. One group says eighteen inches. Let's pick fifteen inches, compromise, get the bill done. And as everyone said, let's get this law on the books at a, at a, at a size that's going to work for the village. And to quote Kathleen Mulcahy, who quoted Aidan Corish, "Perfect is good." And I think the, the answer here is for the, for the board to not take the view absolutely of the landscape professionals, and the board not to take the view absolutely of the, of, of other people, and say, let's settle on fifteen inches and let's get it done. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Now, what's that? Sure.
I kind of take it a bit of an offense. Mr. Hollander grouped the people who spoke before us as April's crew and Same Sag Harpers crew, and these are individuals who stood for their own opinions. And to diminish their, their thinking by grouping them is, I think, not right. And then to go on and list all the accolades, all we need to do is look at. And then to go on and list all the accolades, all we need to do is look at the work that they've done in Sag Harbor, the Wharf and Steinbeck Park. And I will just say they're not like Borg walks in Venice. So I think you should listen to the community as much as you might listen to individuals who claim to represent others.
I think we've heard from, I'm sure, you already spoke, Eileen, so I think you made your point. I don't, I don't want to get into this back and forth. I just wanted, everybody's made their position known. I think it's time for the board to either comment on what has been said or move forward on this particular legislation, the way it sits right now.
There's no resolution of adoption prepared for this evening because I didn't know which way the board was going to go. So it currently says eighteen. So you do have time if you want to think about it and then direct me before the next meeting to draft a resolution of adoption.
Right. So I, I had offered, I had done exactly what Mr. Hollander suggested, which was I offered to the board in, in an email to compromise at fifteen inches and to exempt the invasive species, not the non-natives, but the specific invasive species from the rule. But hearing that some of the comments from the audience, especially from the former mayor, stating that, you know, once we lose these trees, there's no going back. I think we need some time to reconsider possibly going to the twelve-inch diameter. So I don't think we're ready to adopt it tonight or... So I'll leave it at, I think we'll continue to keep this open.
So do you think we're, we're thinking about doing a tree preservation code and a clearing code?
Well, that's interesting point that Ed brings up, which is those two need to be separated. And I think that we had some discussion on clearing council that there's certain things we cannot do in the legislation as far as clearing goes.
Well, there's already a provision about clearing in the code. The first version of this addressed clearing and restricted it to the percentages. And the board was considering what percentage would be appropriate for smaller lots in the village Sag Harbor. There is a provision in the code about clearing at three hundred dash nine point one-one. And that was what we were originally amending. That says clearing, no clearing of any lot or parcel of land for any activity. Sorry, let me come up the whole thing. Let me just pull it up. No clearing of any lot or parcel of land for an activity which requires a building permit shall occur except incidental to and after the issuance of such building permit. So that was the clearing provision in the code, and we had originally started to amend that. And then the board shifted away from that into preserving tree preservation because most of the lots in the village, it was determined, are substantially cleared and improved.
They've already been cleared.
They've already developed.
Yeah.
Just as an aside, North Haven did a much more broken down clearing allowance. Lots are five thousand feet, they allow a hundred percent. Lots that are eight thousand, they allow, they broke it out much more. There's not that many lots, it's R twenty, but how many, actually twenty thousand foot square lots, foot lots are there in the village? It never made sense to me.
We just adopted a code from Southampton.
Right. And that's where North Haven is very different.
My position on this right now is I feel eight inches is just not doable. I've heard a lot of eight to twelve, I'm likely eight right off the table. And I'm torn between twelve and fifteen. I've walked around the village with tape measures and hugged trees as, and tried to get a full, like, a real understanding. It's one thing to sit here and talk sizes, it's something else. I've not decided, I'll be really honest. I think I need a little more time with this. I just haven't decided whether it's twelve or fifteen. But it's definitely not eight, and it's definitely not eighteen. So that's where I am tonight.
I, I would suggest, what I suggest, and I, I had spoken about this, is that we go to a open space, which we're going to talk about in the future, an open space parcel that we have in the village, say the parcel that's on, what do you want to say, it's the garden spring parcel there? And go through there with three different colored ribbons and mark the trees that are twelve, that are fifteen, and that are eighteen. And then take a step back and see what you have left. If you have two or three trees or maybe no trees that are eighteen inches, well, then that's too big, right? If you have multiple trees that are over twelve inches, you're going to have to take that into consideration. And if fifteen is the number it should be, if that seems reasonable, then that's, but at least that will give you a visual of what we're talking about.
So there's a special caliber tape to be used, not a tape measure.
Right.
Right. I had a soft.
Yep, yep. So I think we're going to hold off on this for now, but we're getting closer. I feel like we're getting closer.
Then you'll be able to address it.
And don't want to overlook the idea of how this gets administered. And the smaller we go in cap, calipers, the more important it is to get an administration that we can manage.
Which gets me back to my point of put it on the permit. Put it on the site plan, what you can clear, what you can't.
That's, that's in a case of a clearing associated with a building permit.
Right.
But an individual tree would be subject to this as well. There's no permit, there is.
It's a tree permit as opposed to a building permit, right? So that's where.
All right, so we're, we're going to, we would need to discuss this some more. So we'll move on to the next public hearing, which is a local law to amend Chapter two fifteen, Seasonal Use Dwelling Unit Registry to create a rental permit registry for the village of Sag Harbor. Now, we made, we made some changes to that, is that correct?
Yes, so this is going to be re-noticed so that, you know, there've been several public hearing dates on this matter already, but there'll be another public hearing re-notice for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three at six o'clock to consider some further changes that the board addressed. There were some codified sections already in the code which outlined what was required in an application that maybe was redundant. And so it, it actually probably didn't need to be codified to begin with, but it was that are being deleted, and that's in Section two fifteen dash three, Rental Registry Application under Section B and its numbers three, four, five, six, seven, and nine. And those are the number of tenants requested, the floor plan depicting the size and location of each bedroom, the copy of the contract for the Carter for, or garbage pickup, the name and legal address of the mailing address of each tenant, and the period of proposed tenancy, and an affidavit saying that you're going to comply with different sections of the code when you would already have to be, you're already subject.
So I took, I took a good look at the revisions and it seemed, I think we're where we want to be right now, which is it's simplified, it gets directly to the point.
So I'm, I have a draft of, which is not ready for distribution of, we were trying to get this onto one sheet of paper so that it's easy to comply with. I think we're almost there. Everything we took out are not safety-related. There was a lot of other, this is all about safety and this is all about making sure that people have the right smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and the swimming pools are safe.
Means of egress.
And means of egress, that's, yeah. So I'm hoping that in December we'll be able to share this and have it on the website before then.
I'm wondering if we can share that in advance.
I'm happy to share this in advance, but I want to stamp it first that it's not. I'll send you a copy of this to put on the website. But I want to do work in progress.
I think it'll be helpful for the village residents to see that and know what they have to comply with in advance. Because the legislation is substantially complete, we believe, and that, that's the, the process.
Exactly. This is, one side is the permit application and the other side is a rental permit checklist. These are all the items you have to check, and at the bottom you get it notarized, and then the building department stamp it as approved. And it runs for two years from the date of issue. And we're looking at a standard fee of two hundred and fifty dollars for the two years and a reduced fee of a hundred and fifty dollars for a veteran, seniors, star, fire department, and for ambulance corps.
And then, and then the only other thing.
It is released here, but we can.
Oh, it is, okay. Just put draft, that it's not filed, yeah.
And the only other thing to add is once you do rent your house, whether it's seasonal or however, then you would bring a copy of the lease. So then the building department would know who the tenants are. And so that's the way of to simplify the application, so just so everybody understands the process.
The application, this goes with the house. And the lease then goes with the tenant. So the building department have to have a copy of a lease while there's an active tenancy. So they know who's in there. And this has got stuff like contact information and all that.
So we have a continued public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, could you come and identify yourself?
Will there be inspections by the Sag community? This is, this is on the owner.
And that's why you notarize. If you want to have, you would have the choice. You could either do it yourself to say, I notarize it and it's done. Or if you want to bring in a licensed person to do it, because some people may prefer to do that, you would have that option.
Comes next month, will that become a law?
We're thinking January, we'll adopt in Jan, at the January meeting.
That's what it seems like.
It's effective, this version says it would take effect January first.
January first, and we're still on track for that. Next month, December.
If not, we could, we'd have to get rid of that and make it.
Let me just, we, we could adopt it in December, effective January one, twenty twenty-four. That's the earliest.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment from the public? Okay, so we'll continue the public hearing. That gets us to the action. We have no discussion items, so now we're on to action items. Resolution November twenty twenty-three to accept the Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee Charter. Want to talk about this briefly?
Not really.
Where did this come from? I, I think we need a committee for, of committees.
Well, that, we're in the process of, we have committees that are out there that we would like to have them come forward and.
Regular.
Right, have a charter because they're just out there and advising, but they really need to have a charter as far as what their parameters should be that they're working within and what their purpose is. So this is to the open space and Parks Advisory Committee. It is, and it's to, it's really to reimagine and to look at all of our open spaces and parks and, and think about how they're being used and how they can be used. And, and in particular, some of the things that have been talked about, discussed is how can we connect some of the open spaces, especially the ones along the waterfront? So they're all walkable and connected that way. How can we improve access to the open spaces? How do we, how do we come up with an integrated vision of the uses for the open spaces? And so it grew somewhat organically, but with the idea that we wanted to analyze, get public input around what the open spaces could be used for that they're not being used for now. Some are being, some are just perfectly fine the way they are. Some could be improved, some can. And, and then in addition to that, what also came out of that was there's some open spaces can be utilized to improve traffic flow within the village as well. And, and there's so many open spaces in this village. Fifty and counting, fifty-one, I think, is our latest count. They range in size from, you know, fraction of, of a percent of an acre to Havens Beach is eighteen acres, frankly. Mash Park, not village-owned, privately owned, fifty-plus acres or forty-five plus acres. And so it grew with, with all the peep, all trying to get representatives of different interests to help us compile information, coordinate analysis, gather and organize public input on, on how we can reimagine open spaces and better utilize our open spaces and provide better access to the open spaces. The members of the committee are Trustee Kane, myself, John Chaco's in the audience, who's the head of the planning board, Lieutenant Drake, who's in the audience, Drew Harvey, who's been working with the community to help proposals for open spaces in the village of Sag Harbor and who's run a lot of activities as well as runs his own business called Dog Pack Bandits. Funny name, but tries to do a lot of good community work throughout the communities in the East End and across the country, frankly. And then Rachel D., who's the president of the Mash Park Board, Chair of the Park Board of Directors, and Ed Hollander. And Rory McAvoy, sorry, who is also, who's an owner of a business in the village, Kid Squid, who's also the former director of Parks for the City of New York. So all those people bring in different viewpoints to help the overall mission and goal of the village is to help us all improve access to the open spaces, reimagine, get public input on how the spaces could be better utilized. And is there anything you'd like to add as I ramble on?
No, I think you hit it, you know, the mitigating traffic where and when we can is going to be a goal. Looking to add bike lanes or make them more visible so that both the riders would know where to go and cars would be aware. So things like that is what we're going to try to work on.
I would just say, you know, for somebody who didn't want to talk about it.
I know.
But what I also would say is that this is not something these, this, especially this committee, it's not something we're saying, this is what we're going to do. We're, we're, we're suggesting, we're throwing things out there, coming up with ideas and then getting feedback from the public to see how they feel about it.
And open other ideas.
Right. So that may lead to other possible ideas or solutions. And it's explicit in the Charter of this committee, this committee, and it's been emphasized very clearly by council, is advisory to the Board of Trustees. So it's breaking macrorendations to the public with public input to the Board of Trustees. It cannot act without Board of Trustees authority on any aspect of, of what it's investigating and analyzing. And the recommendations would need to be adopted by the Board of Trustees to be effective. And all of that would have public input first. Okay, so a motion to motion? Motion by Trustee Plum, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Corr, all those in favor? Anyone opposed, so carry. Next, we have resolution November twenty twenty-three to go out to bid for the dock piling protectors. Have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Trustee Corr, second? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. We have a resolution to rescind, wait, yes, resolution to rescind number, wait, is that September fifth? Twenty twenty-three awarding the sole bidder of the two thousand and four Steiger boat. So we're rescinding. Right, the people, the person does not want to accept the boat.
I want to go look at it.
I believe that is still a ship ashore. So I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Trustee Corr, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Resolution November twenty twenty-three to accept the resignation of K. Preston Lawson, member of the planning board, do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Trustee Corr, second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor? Opposed, so carry. Resolution approving appointment of Granié M. Cohen as member of the planning board. She's now an alternate, we're going to move her up to a full voting member. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, second? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Resolution authorizing twenty twenty-four dock rates. Have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Trustee Corr, seconded? Seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Resolution November twenty twenty-three, consent Joan Butler and Helen Roussel of Friends of Havens Beach to submit an application to Harbor Committee for installation of an oyster reef along the inside wall of the breakwater.
That's what that presentation was.
Yes, yes.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Kane, seconded by Trustee Corr, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Resolution November twenty twenty-three, authorizing partial refund to the Harbor Tours, Inc. for twenty twenty-three license agreement.
So this is for the American Beauty. He was the only boat that did not have an alternate docking location during the Longworth transient dock expansion. So he wasn't able to do his agreement from the April first. I think he came in sometime in July.
July. July.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Plum. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution November twenty twenty-three authorizing mayor to sign repurchase agreement with Ford Motor Company. This is for a police cruiser that basically is a lemon. So I need a motion on that. Motion by trustee Cora, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution November twenty twenty-three authorizing the village of Sag Harbor to pay the balance due for additional scope of work for the long wharf transient dock and expansion project. So we had some additional costs to finish off.
Thousand dollars to finish off.
Okay, motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Plum. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution November twenty twenty-three appropriating the excess fund balance of the ambulance department budget for the years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three to fund the reserves. This is for what they didn't spend in their budget is going to go into their reserve funds to purchase equipment. Motion by trustee Cora, seconded by trustee Plum. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Same type of resolution November twenty twenty-three appropriating the net excess fund balance of the fire department budget for the year ending twenty twenty-three to fund the reserves.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane second. Seconded by trustee Plum. All is in favor?
Aye.
Just one question on that. Is the fireboat reserve fully funded or still more to go?
You're talking about the fireboat or the?
Because this is split between three reserves, it looks like.
So the chiefs make their decision of how they want it to be split.
No, I'm just saying, is the boat fully funded with the, not even close. Okay.
Hang on a second.
Twenty-two.
You're asking a question about the fireboat specifically?
Yes.
The fireboat, we, I believe was two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars was was put down. That was the down payment to start. We've so far fundraised, I believe, over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I believe so.
Which would be, which would leave a payment at the end for to to the final payment.
Thank you.
But we're still, we're still receiving donations. Might even be higher than two hundred and fifty, might be closer to three hundred thousand. So we continue to get donations towards the boat.
And when it's received, we'll have that grant funding from the kitchen that we.
Right. We have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant which we'll, we'll then receive. Right. Yeah. So do I have a motion?
We did.
You did. Everybody in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution November twenty twenty-three authorizing mayor to sign service award program twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four service fee agreement with Penflex.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Cora. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution November twenty twenty-three approving appointment of Sueyt Ocretion as alternate member with the Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review. I thought we already approved him. Why is he going?
We did approve her. There was a lapse in thirty days of taking the oath of office.
Okay, so we had to. So we're approving, approving her again. Motion? Motion by trustee Plum second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution November twenty twenty-three to accept the budget transfers for year ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Cora second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution November twenty twenty-three to accept the budget transfers for October twenty twenty-three. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Authorization to accept twenty twenty-three bank reconciliations and collateral reports for September twenty twenty-three.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Cora. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Carrie Garapie, secretary to the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance, requests authorization to remove Ryan Kleinkoff as a paid EMT and Randy Hoffman as a paid EMT CC effective immediately. So this was a EMT, somebody that we hired, and they never showed up. They never reported for orientation or anything. So.
And Randy's a resignation.
Right. Randy's resigning. Motion by trustee Plum, seconded, seconded by trustee Kane. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Carrie Garapie, secretary of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps, requests authorization to add Lady Torado Terrell and Craig Kayaza as active probationary members and be added to the insurance rolls. So that's two, two new ambulance members we're getting.
Great.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay second.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Cora. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I also say she's probably single-handedly most responsible for increasing the revenues to the justice court for the village of Sag Harbor.
So we're fan, we're lady, lady fans.
Big fan.
All's, all right. So we're we're on to number twenty, correct? All right. Richard Chivoni, secretary to the Sag Harbor Fire Department, requests to accept the following. The resignation of John Mean, Joseph Fegan, and Kevin O'Brien, Jr., and add them to the honorary roles. The resignation of David Birdsong and Jack McClellan and remove them from the insurance roles. The addition of Cyril Renaud and Alden Crocker Kinder to the Otter Hoes and add them to the insurance roles as active probationary firefighters to move Josh Miller and Luke Rosen from active probationary to full active member status. Need a motion?
I'm of it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay second. Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Nicholas Samot, president of the Sag Harbor PBA, requests permission to place Santa's mailbox on Main Street beside the municipal building for the holiday season.
So moved.
Santa fans.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Cora. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thomas G. Cartino of the Sag Harbor Lions Club requests permission to have the annual Christmas tree sale at Long Wharf next to the windmill from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three through January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, also requesting to place a banner on the grassy area of Long Wharf.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cora. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Nancy Akemback, president of the Sag Harbor Historical Museum, requests permission to have a book launch event on Sunday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, from four P M. to six P M. at one eighty-nine Main Street.
I'll move that.
Motion by trustee Cora.
Sorry.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Jessica Von Han of North Haven Village Improvement Society requests permission to use a fire truck for the annual Santa visit to the children of North Haven on Saturday, December sixteenth. There's a day in history. From twelve to two P M. That was, that was the cinema fire day. Motion by.
Cinema fire.
By deputy mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Cora. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Natagozi of the Sag Harbor Inn requests permission to erect a menorah on the grassy area of Long Wharf to celebrate Hanukkah on December fourth, twenty twenty-three through December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Have a motion? Motion by trustee Kane?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And finally, under action items, William E. McCoy, vice president of the Sag Harbor Community Band, requests authorization to have their annual outdoor summer concerts at Marine Park on Tuesday nights, starting on July ninth, twenty twenty-four through August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, from three to nine thirty P M. Pending insurance.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That moves us to the improvement of the bills, payment to the bills. A motion to approve warrants twenty-three in the amount of four hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three and thirty-three cents. Warrant number twenty-four in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred and four and twenty-one cents. Warrant number twenty-five in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Warrant number twenty-six in the amount of one million, seven hundred thirty-two thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents. So I have a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Cora second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried. That brings us to public comments. Fifteen minute public session. Yes, Anthony.
Who else left?
Sorry, it can be a little bit longer here, but I just did want to, you know, I sent Gene and Bob and Liz just my comments on three hundred dash alt six, which I am still kind of trying to understand where, when that's applicable and not applicable. And I have the answer tonight, just reminding you, if you could just please take a look at that and kind of get some last questions answered. Because I have to, I mean, I have to inform my clients as to, you know, what they, what they can and can't do. And I'm still struggling to understand it myself. So.
Is that the fifty percent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Understood.
This was, this was something that was passed a couple of years ago. I believe we passed that.
It, it was. And I thought it meant one thing when it was passed. And now it seems like I misunderstood. And I, I'm not alone with this. I know a lot of my colleagues and a lot of attorneys also misunderstood what this, when this was going to be applicable.
Right.
So now we're just kind of struggling to understand when it's going to be applicable and not.
Okay. It's, it's, it's too complex to tell you right now.
Okay.
We'll get there.
Okay.
Because it's, he's absolutely right. It's hard.
Little diagram present to Gene and Bob and the whole board.
If you would.
Yeah, we could. That would be great.
Yes.
I hope that makes it easier to understand why, you know.
It's hard.
My question.
And and, you know, we did have a code meeting.
Right.
Bob and I and Anthony was part of it and Val was there.
And I, I think I do understand now much better than before, but I still just want to really just want.
It's very fair.
Yeah.
Totally fair. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Eileen?
She's still at the airport and she just asked that we mentioned that we previously suggested another possible compromise instead of fifteen inches, but pilot program for an eighteen to twenty-four month period to try the twelve inch D V H because we can't go back.
Right.
Once we, so she did remind us.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. That could be a solution. Any, any other public comments? Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Okay, second?
Second.
Aye.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
I'll always depend on that for motion to adjourn.